Plan board meeting to order. We're actually starting a few minutes early. So, first order of business will be the approval of the January 17th minutes. If you have read them.
There's one here. I was absent, so I couldn't second it.
Okay.
I think Christina doesn't have everybody figure out yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you're so picky.
I know, I know.
So, I would venture to say, good grief.
I don't believe I was voting that night.
I believe you were.
What do you believe I was?
Yeah, I think you were.
In any way?
Yeah, because if I was absent, Donovan was absent, you would be the only one.
All right, then I will second you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because it was that.
How did she mistake Dennis for Wesley?
With all that life on her hands.
I know, she's a lot better looking than I am.
I don't even want to know what the thought process was.
All right, so that changes, changed to Dennis. We'll make that correction.
I'll make a motion to accept the minute.
One second.
Second from Gavin. If I repeat what a lot of you say tonight, is we are going to get better audio in here, because out of all the meetings that take place, whether it's school committee, or rec, or any of them, we are the least likely to be heard. There are a couple of people with big mouths here that can, but there are also several who speak very nicely, but softly, and it's not always picked up.
It's bad quality anyway, because I tried listening to our meetings.
It's bad.
Impossible. I gave up, because some qualities were bad. Christina does have a hard time with it.
Yes, we can appreciate how difficult it makes it.
When you have air conditioner on, and there's traffic.
Yes, yeah, even, like you say, even if it's not the air conditioner, if we have a window open, we'd round out. So, but we will be getting, there'll be an upgrade to our audio, so that would be a good thing. So, if I am repeating, it's just probably because I'm one of the big mouths, anyway. Any other issues on this? Yes?
Just a couple of small ones. On the same line as subdivision regulations, instead of here regarding, it should be per regarding W E there, for clarity.
Yes.
And number four, you like to add the word vegetated before the word buffer?
Yeah.
Might as well ask who her is.
Me.
Joyce.
Yeah, you might want to change it from her to Joyce.
The chair of women.
Or chair.
Okay.
Chair of women.
Thank you.
Please, it wasn't me. I'm sorry.
And I think if we're doing that at noon time, I believe, is two words. Yeah, I believe so. So, shall we vote to accept the minutes as amended? All in favor? You would like to pass with one extension.
Four zero one.
Yeah, four zero one. The Dennis you will be voting tonight, well, one thing on, we have no new business before us this week. We have a couple of conversations that will take place regarding business that will be coming forward. Under old business, as you know, the subcommittee has been meeting for some time now, going over our ordinances, and you should all have a copy of this green sheet, these were voted on by us, and this green sheet is particularly due on the timber harvesting, and as you all know, this was to put us into compliance with state regulations. We thought we were in compliance, and even though we do have word saying that you don't have to have exactly what we have, but close to it, we weren't close enough. So, now we are in compliance. That will go before the voters at the town meeting. Now, beyond that, what we have worked on in the land use chart is housekeeping matters, and housekeeping is, as Brenda stated earlier, we may have found some misspelling along the way. We would rather present with, you know, grammatically and spell correctly, but there are some things that truly, it's very iffy if in fact they pertain to act in, in our thing, and there are some things that we're missing. If you want to look at your books on zoning ordinances, on page 15 of 108, under commercial and industrial, we are going to add the word adult, then slash, in front of childcare. Under, two more under that, facilities, which by the nature of their operations require a storefront location, such as boatyard, marina, and commercial fishing facilities. We're going to remove the last three words, commercial fishing facilities.
And the word and.
Yes, and the word and. It goes like grammar again, yeah, and the word and. Now, I misspoke by saying we're going to, we need the vote of everybody here to do that. So, all in favor of those changes?
I believe that's going to have to go to the board.
Well, it does, eventually, but we have to agree.
So, you're voting to propose it?
We are agreeing on, that we are voting saying that this is what this board agrees to do.
But we're voting on the work the subcommittee has done.
We are voting on the work the subcommittee has done.
Now, with the first of the two, is it child daycare for home occupation, or childcare facility?
Childcare facility.
I think both of them.
It really should be both of them.
Yeah, both of them.
Yeah, I think we should do both of them.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Yes.
Okay.
Wasn't there concern that there's a pretty big difference in terms of adult care versus childcare, whether or not should be a actual separate line item?
This gives us a place to start, and I think eventually it will be, but this at least gives us, otherwise we have nothing. Otherwise, we have nothing.
I mean, this is different than a daycare. You know, this is healthcare.
No, this is not healthcare. This is, this is really daycare.
Which definitions?
I mean, would, if you. We have to add the definition. Because, but adult care is simply, you know, maybe grandma is in her 90s, or, you know, whatever, but she's of sound mind and, you know, as healthy as someone, but you don't want her to be alone all day.
I just need someone to be in, to maybe make lunch for her.
Make lunch, make a cup of tea.
Be a companion type thing.
And, you know, just because, when you go to work, you're leaving her alone all day, and you don't want to do it.
Would it have to be licensed?
As childcare is, yes.
Yeah, wasn't, like, there wasn't there, like, talk of, like, terms of medications, and like, it's a whole different?
This is not for medication, this is just.
It's more likely to have to give the medications and.
Well, that would have all the licenses through the state.
That's where the licenses are from, and that would go through the, that's where childcare, they go through the state first.
Right.
So, and for us to give.
I'm just thinking, it makes sense from where I'm sitting.
But you could say the same thing about childcare. Some children need medication.
I think for the land use chart purposes, you could, you could put them together, because you're looking whether it's a conditional use, whether it's like land review, and then when it came to the board, that's when you would look at the conditional use aspect, don't it?
Right. Yeah, because, you know, when you get into things like healthcare, many children need to be given medication in a timely fashion, and daycare operators do that.
Right, but Tylenol, I.
Not necessarily. What if you, what if you have a child who's diabetic?
I think what you have to look at.
So, that, that would come down from the state level.
And because this is a land use chart, would it ever be that maybe you would consider one for conditional use, but the other for cycling or new? I mean, would they have a difference?
You may.
But you have assisted living.
But that's.
I mean, that would be different.
That's much different than assisted living. The other thing is, is it might be, supposing you have, we want to look at, where are you going to have this, okay, in your home? Do you have the proper number of bathrooms? Do you have egress? And when you have cars picking people up, is it safe? Can you, do you have a turnaround place? All of the things that have to do with land use, not necessarily, and conditional use, not, you know.
What if the, I mean, you change the terminology on the definition, and the definition is really the same.
Right.
So, when we're doing this, do we have to vote on the definitions? Is that just something that we do anyway?
If we don't have to change it, we don't.
Well, I'm talking about the terminology, because it says childcare facility.
Well, we would have.
Change it to adult.
Adult, child, adult slash.
I just, I just, I think we want to do it at the same time.
Yes, definitely.
You know?
Definitely, but.
And I think just by inserting, inserting the word.
Word.
And if you look at the definitions of childcare facility and daycare, it also specifies that they're registered in the state.
They have, they have to be licensed with the state. Daycare is very specific when it comes down to it. They, there's a six-hour course that people have to go through. They should be licensed in CPR and first aid for children.
Background check.
They have to have, anybody over the age of 18, living in the house, has to have a, what is called a core check, or a background check. And, you know, it's, I'm not sure the main law, I do know, when I was working, I worked mostly in Massachusetts, even if you're working in a library with young kids, state law says you have to have a core check, that sort of thing.
Could we, could we eliminate a definition in here?
Could you give us the page and the reference?
The page, it's 22, 108, or 108. Up top, when you look at the two definitions of a childcare facility and a child daycare, the only two differences is one's private, one's commercial.
Correct.
So, why couldn't you have an adult care facility, private or commercial, because the definitions after that are the same? It'd be less reading. Because a child daycare is a private home and childcare facility, a commercial enterprise. Well, if you just put commercial or private, you wouldn't have to have two definitions that really say the same thing.
So, but, but your header would have to, child.
Adult childcare facility. Or adult slash childcare facility, or however you wanted to.
I wonder if they're broken apart, because somewhere in the ordinance, there may be criteria for.
There are different.
That isn't for.
They are different, there's different criteria.
Even in the actual chart, they're different.
Yeah, when you look at the chart.
Even though they're the same, they may, they may fall in different places.
Oh, that's fine then.
Okay, so I just.
Just a thought.
So, in, yeah, so in the definition, just the slash adult?
No. Well, I wish I could read the penmanship.
On page 15, I'm sorry. There we go. So, if, would we all be in agreement? We're, we're using this as a workshop then, to get our agreement for, from four of us, yes? And five, I don't think so. Would you be in agreement for those five, those changes? Adding adult slash, yes? All right, then I would call for a vote, all those in favor?
Yeah.
I'm gonna miss that.
Is it four one?
Is it four one, or is it?
Yeah, I just kind of still, to me, it just seemed very different.
But we have something on the books, that's the important thing, so.
I think it is different in the manual, I mean, definitions kind of squeezed together.
They are, but there's nothing that says adult in this book.
I'm not over adding it.
Okay, yeah, go. And then, we are going to have, coming before us at some point, some things that would be pertinent to this, so I would suggest everybody read up on it, so they'll, you know, they're going, in fact, I have some information I can give you all on daycare and things, and there is a plethora of information available to us, so. You have us down Dennis, five.
Yeah, it's there.
Four one. Four and a half, two and a half. Is it five zero?
Yeah, sure.
Very good, very good. Now, we'll go to housekeeping, which.
Did you vote?
Joy, there's one more in there.
Oh.
Land management roads.
That's part of that.
That's green thing.
That's part of the green thing.
Green thing.
There was all of this with the timber.
That's what I was expecting.
Did you military vote for this?
Yes.
We did vote on this?
Yes.
So, this, that five zero was for all that you had to talk about before.
Yes, thank you.
So, the civic center's name, does that fit?
Yeah, yeah, because after a lot of looking and everything, and Ken even said, we can loosely call that building a civic center. If the, that's where, it's municipal building, and that's, you know, we were, that's where we could meet.
Gathering.
Because there could be a gathering there, you know, emphasis on could be. Now, as we had in the minutes, Gavin brought forward that there were some repetition of numbers, that, you know, void, whoever typed this out, we won't say, but.
Was it me?
No. That, Brenda, secretary, and the deputy will make sure that repetition of number is corrected.
Wasn't that in the subdivision?
Right, we don't, we don't, everything's in the subdivision.
It's all in the subdivision.
Yeah, we don't have to put that forward, Ken said, but we do have to.
But we do.
Vote on, so we can have a hearing if that's what we want.
No, we got to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
We don't have to vote to the selectmen. We can do that in-house.
Right, so.
I think we generally still hold a hearing.
Right, but this is, this is simply, we all agree that we can have.
Because they're regulations.
These are, these are regulations, subdivision regulations, and we will, under housekeeping, correct any and all misnumbering of regulations.
And we can do that the same day we have a public hearing on the zoning change.
Correct, so.
Good idea.
Good idea, very good idea. So, if we could, I'd like to call for a vote, and.
I do have a couple, I just, number one in the minutes.
Yeah.
I found a couple more places where that same reference is indicated on page 23.
Gavin, I'm gonna hold.
It's just the same division of 2006, but I found a couple more.
You know what I could do? I could do a search and find.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, but right now, we still have to vote, we got a motion up.
What do you want, what's motion?
I was just getting.
To correct, I know, that's in the minutes, but we want to correct in the subdivision book.
Right, but I'm just using the minutes as my template.
Okay.
Talking about.
So, maybe you can sort any reference to dates as well.
Oh, okay, so.
And what I was saying, in the subdivision rights, I want to add one more spot, page 23, where we have the same best management practices made in 2006 referenced, and just that we would strike the 2006 there as well, if we both decided to do it in the one location on.
So, you should just correct the numbering?
Yeah, just like we did on page 30, mounting.
And then what you could do is include in dates?
Yeah.
Yes, including.
So, would you still reference the manual, but no date?
That's what I was, that's what I think we were leaning toward last time.
Or just say the current version, the current.
Current, yeah.
Then we don't have to change the date again in the future.
Right.
If it's gone entirely.
But don't you sometimes, with things, refer to the dates when something's done, and see if it changed after that date?
But these are, are.
Right, it depends on the reference.
It's for direction, really.
But these aren't, we're not correcting the word that's here, or the regulation. We're correcting, I'm not on the right page.
Right.
But we can't have 10.4 twice, 10.4, 10.4, no, we go from 10.4 to 10.5, twice, twice. And there is that section.
Maybe I misunderstood that?
Yeah.
I thought he just wanted to eliminate the date that was in there.
Yeah, we can all look at page 39.
Right.
Which is the one that I'm, that's referenced on number one in the minutes. And on page 39, D2, you'll probably see it there, 10.1 to D2, it references the DEP phosphorus design manual, volume two, the main stormwater best management practice manual, and then it says the date 2006.
Correct.
And I think there's probably a more recent one out there, but I don't want to put 2012, because then next year will be, change it to 2015, or something.
I see what you mean.
So, we'll just eliminate the 2006, was the, what we were leaning toward last meeting to solve the issue, and then there was, again, on page 23, it's the same, it's the same.
It's the same thing, is it?
To the same manual, with the same date, and I was just thinking we could do it there as well, for efficiency, but then Brenda said she could just use the computer to find all those dates, and eliminate all of them at that one, once.
Yeah, we do that at different meetings.
There's other manuals of reference too.
Is it?
There's other manuals of reference too, like the, on page 38.
Right.
Number 1011, the 1987 Corps of Engineers wetland evaluation manual.
Yeah, well, some, some are going to be hard to tell, because it's like, some, there was one on page 23 that was just like that.
Yeah.
But it was like, it was kind of a special one, on 7.3A, prepared with the Main Erosion and Sedimentation Control Handbook for Construction Best Management Practices published by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District, 1991, but the Cumberland County Soil and Water District may not have gotten together with the.
Again.
Again, so maybe that date is more pertinent.
How many did turn for that?
I had just targeted the one, because we've kind of gone through the stormwater stuff before, and had a better idea for it. There are more dates in there, and maybe we'd have to look at each one individually.
Would it be a benefit if I, if I Google, if I identified all the dates in the document, and shaded them, and let you look at them at another meeting, see which ones you want to keep, and which ones, would that, would that be beneficial?
I think so.
That would give us.
If we're interested.
More disinformation to do it correctly.
I mean, if that way, we could, we can always just do a Google search to see.
And see if dates, exactly, these have been revised.
Exactly, look for revisions.
To see if it has been.
Yeah.
So, I'll have that for your next meeting, or do you, or do you want that for your workshop? Where do you want that?
I, I think, I, I know my, our schedule for the 21st is pretty heavy.
It is.
And I think if you would just have it ready.
Okay.
And then maybe then they could look at it and then come.
Right, we can look at it, because we'll have it, we'll look at it. It doesn't call for us to have a whole lot of discussion, but we could put that to our next workshop, because going forward after that, we're going to be in March, and we all know what happens in March and April. The people are coming in like crazy, you know, conditional use permits are going to just explode. This weather evidently, I think, is going to be, we're going to have an early spring, unless we're iced out again, you know, it's been so icy the last couple of days, scares me, but I think if we had that, then we could make ourselves, you know, much more educated about it, so.
I kind of look at this subdivision thing, and zoning ordinance, kind of like a well-maintained policy manual, and it's always a continuing document that you're always tweaking and changing, to fit the times, stuff that didn't work.
It's a living document.
That's what I mean, it's a living document, and I may agree with Gavin saying, it's just that, I think right now, for time purposes, we need to vote on what we've done.
Yes.
And then we can still keep on picking away at whatever, whatever, you know, we want to work on.
We need to abuse of the pie.
Yep.
One at a time.
I think it's really impressive that you're saving some time at each meeting, even if it's just a few minutes to address it, and that's how it's going to come together for you, because in the past, we put on the back burner, and that's it.
Right, never gets done.
Never gets done.
Exactly.
So, that being the case, if we look at what we have in the minutes that were approved, let's go back to what we would vote on, that would be to correct what was brought up, and that is, I mean, those are your corrections, we're not changing.
I think it was one through four, but number four is a little bit different.
That's going to take some discussion, don't you think?
Right, we could discuss number four a little bit more, I mean, we could vote on it, but then we have to discuss how it determines the size of the buffer.
It's for size.
Which we did kind of touch on at the last meeting, but.
And we don't have time to do that, no?
We have time, though, to do that.
Before a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I think that's something we can use to be careful.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Yeah, and I agree with that. We want to be careful.
I don't think you went here at the last meeting, right?
I don't know.
So what I proposed to the board was that we did a sliding scale buffer because like a, you had a small subdivision, it was only twenty-five acres, it wouldn't make sense to give them the same hundred-foot buffer.
Absolutely.
As a hundred-acre subdivision, so I, I proposed a sliding scale where the buffer would be, you'd get, you'd get the total size of the subdivision, not what's being developed, but the entire size. And so your buffer would be one foot per acre, so for a fifty-acre subdivision, that would be the total size, it would be a fifty-foot vegetated buffer between the body properties and the back of the subdivided lots. And so a hundred-acre subdivision would have a hundred-foot buffer. And then we did also discuss maybe it would, at a certain point, the buffer would only get so large, and then as the buffer diminished, it would just go back to the existing standards and the ordinance. You know, it's not like you'd have a five-acre subdivision with a five-foot buffer because you would, you'd end up with the guidelines already in place taking.
Taking.
At that point.
And that makes perfect sense.
Right.
Yeah.
And you, and you would have a maximum as well.
Which we did, I mean, I.
You know, I think we just touched on that.
Couple, like two hundred feet or something.
Feet, exactly.
Was what I threw up there, well, we could discuss it more.
I think we need to discuss it more, but I think it's very.
And just because you were here, I think that was everything we went over.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's a very fair and equitable way to do it, to have what we have now and then a standard. You know, there's a minimum, and we're going to set a maximum, an acre or whatever.
And that, that makes perfect sense. And yeah, I think that's a very good idea.
All right, so that's four, so you are with us in our discussions, Madam Secretary?
So far.
Okay. So we still, could I please have a motion to accept the numbering correcting corrections only?
So move.
Are you talking about one, two, and three, effectively?
Yes, put that to the left. Second, second, all in favor. Passes. Thank you all. Not getting into this anymore than I have. Since it's only seven thirty, and the, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page. The. What's not on our agenda and should be there, but it is under housekeeping.
But we still need to vote on that.
No, that's done, that's in agreement, it's done.
We already won all that.
Yeah, it's all done.
Good job.
You're good.
Is, I.
Good thing I'm not running the main.
I, I would like you all, right now to.
You've now did nothing, though.
Put away zoning things, and please pull it out, you have a plate. Now, this is coming more and more to the front. Almost at every meeting of the VOS. And we have really got to, to get our noses to the ground still, actually. I know some of you have read it probably six times by now, Dennis?
I've read it a few times.
Few times? I know, I believe Gavin, you're pretty familiar with it.
Not quite, I'm reading, yeah.
Yes, okay.
I find something new with it every time I read it.
And we, we're all doing that. I, I am going to, Dennis has come to me with a lot of things about this. And so I'm going to ask Dennis to share what he thinks our priority should be. And I'm going to go around and ask everybody that, actually. And, and that's not only just things that are absolutely ours to, to deal with, which are at the back of the plane, back in the very, I guess it's, from a newer line, page thirty-seven, there are policy two, consider land use issues of a regional nature when examining zoning changes, encapsulation projects. Those are ongoing things that, you look, it has responsibility, planning board, responsibility. There are four items, and three of them are our responsibility. I can't imagine, it was updated in twenty, in, yeah, two thousand and nine, but that was it. And, and under agriculture and forestry, the same thing. So there are a lot of things that really, you know, are directives for us to take care of. Now, wait, going on, Yolli, is there any, oh, you have yours marked? Good, wonderful.
Like ten years ago.
Have you been waiting that long to tell us?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. It's going to be, oh, okay. Well, that being the case, is there anything that sticks out in your mind, Yolli, that we should? And Brenda, if you would just, because I'm still not writing well enough to read my handwriting. Keep a list, and, you know, we'll go through, just like I said before, we eat a pie once slices at a time. So if we get a list together, we'll go on, so. Is there anything that really calls your name?
No.
No? As we go along? Okay. Gavin, how about you?
Well, there's a lot of stuff that's, you know, it's kind of been updated to two thousand and ten, and just, we don't have the, we haven't put the statistics from the last decade into the mix of a lot of different things that they're talking about. You know, a lot of this is talking about how things were ten years ago or fifteen years ago, so it's kind of outdated in that respect. In terms of the actual plan, I mean, I feel like it's a fairly good plan. I don't feel like I want to change the plan itself that people enacted here. You know, for how, you know, what the, how they broke the town into the different zones and all that, I think that's different growth areas, and I like, I like all that.
Well, that brings something up, and does anybody jump in that's something we have to think about and incorporate? I think it is very good, and then we have the maps, how the town was broken up, supposing, hypothetically. Well, I guess if you're supposing, it is hypothetical. You, somebody wants to come into town and put a seven-eleven with two gas pumps. Where does that come?
Well, we have, we, we know, we don't want it in the oil protection district.
We know when we go, and I don't want it on the shoreline.
So we just kind of go through the different zones and.
Well, if you look at the business district.
You look at the business district.
And a business district, the way it's mapped out, was pretty much mapped out where the existing businesses were at the time.
And it's really small, where you don't want.
It's really small, and most of one oh nine isn't a business district.
Correct.
Well, you guys are talking about the three commercial districts right now.
Well, say they go one oh nine, for example.
Right.
Right, and we also have that transition area defined in the zoning ordinance first.
You have mixed use.
We, we have mixed use, yeah.
Yeah, we have, I mean, so it's, it's kind of like an order, we, we prefer it here, and then our next preference is here, it kind of is order of preference to where things go in the town ideally.
And if somebody decided we needed a bank here, where would we, you know?
Well, I would think we would go with the village, the yellow, old's eye village center would be, you know, be the easiest for residents in the northern part of the town and the different parts of the town to get to the bank would be the central location.
But the, the thing is, and I want to go back to one oh nine again, because logically, most of your businesses would be on one oh nine, just for traffic purposes. The three-phase doesn't go around town very much, but it comes up one oh nine in a lot of these places with the, if you're talking bigger places, would need three-phase power. So what you've got here is down there at the fairgrounds, then you got where the fudge shed is, the laws. Then you get up here, then you go all the way to where the Turks pit.
That's across the street from Turks, where there's the place that was going to be a hygienist.
And you had a storage before that.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I say I play Turks pit.
Right, it's right across the street from Turks pit.
To me, yeah, well, there is some store.
Yeah.
And the transition you've got is, what's this, going up the H road? Yeah. And that's it.
The transit, well, no, we got that whole yellow swath that we got, Mitchell, Mitchell Lane to Mason Road, up one oh nine, Mues Lane.
Oh, I looked at the wrong thing.
The orange is transition, it's kind of.
Yeah, but that's where things have been. You know, I mean, Mitchell's had a business up there for a hundred and fifty years, or however long it would go.
Well, we can find a base to, to make your plan off of current use, could make sense.
It does, but now we have to look to the future. And I say that if we make a commercial district, we expand it on one oh nine. And that hopefully will alleviate the businesses that want to go out onto the side roads or private roads or, you know what I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me, it's for, for the town. Because if a, if a business decided to go up on the Sandy Road, for example, say if it's a, whatever, and they have trucks coming and going all the time, it's going to cost the taxpayers a huge amount of money to maintain those roads with the trucks that are going up and down constantly. We deal with it already on some of our roads. And if you put a, a, a business on that road to make it so that you're not dumping money in it all the time, the state will tell you, it costs about a million dollars a mile to build a road to, sort of take this stuff. And if we don't, if we keep it on one oh nine, then it's a state's problem.
Sure, but what are all these businesses that are going to have higher truck traffic than the gravel pits?
I don't know.
That aren't on one oh nine?
When we did this plan originally, we never imagined we'd have all the gravel pits we got today.
Well, I don't know about that. I think, I think that's a little.
If I can jump.
I think it was planned right then, you can look.
If I, if I can jump in. This is, this is why I'm asking each of you what you see as a, an issue that needs to be really discussed, and.
Well, it looks like we're discussing commercial district A right now.
Yeah, but that's just it, we're not just discussing that right now, that's going on our list, we have to prep for this stuff, okay? And I.
Sure, I mean, I was just going over.
No, no, that's, that's perfect, but that's what I asked you to do.
Yeah.
So that's perfectly fine. And I, I'm going to ask you, Leslie, just to.
Yeah.
Finish what you were going to say, and then let's move on to the next, you know, to issue B that, that you see.
Yeah, it's going to bring the things out into the light.
Right, exactly. But you were.
My, my issue, I follow a little bit of what Dennis was saying as far as the roads.
Right.
Now, if you look at page eight dash two and eight dash three, for the rules, they talk about development and road design, and I'm going to read it because this is, this is going to be significant for what's coming up with us.
Did you say it was?
Eight point two, eight dash two. Roads that are either rated four or deteriorating should be avoided as future development areas until they are approved. At this time, this include Godding Road, Mann Road, Orchard Road, Tech Road, Sam Page Road, Young's Ridge Road. This listing does, anyway, since nineteen ninety-one approximately, half the building permits issued were for development and on these roads. Now, yeah, we've got that subdivision going up off Young's Ridge, and Young's Ridge is in great shape. The Buzzer Road has taken a beating this past six months.
Oh, it's awful, yeah.
Because of, a lot of it because of the, the, the construction trucks in and out.
Right.
I mean, and I drive down that road every day.
Right.
So I've seen the change and how bad it's gotten. And I was one of the ones on the road committee who went and did a survey of every single town road this summer, and these roads are just getting worse and worse.
And, and I can say, like, Sam Page Road, that's one of the ones that I use very frequently. The part that's been fixed is wonderful, but from Mason Road to H Road is horrible. I mean, so that is, that is something that is a concern, and that we, you know, it's something we should look at.
Right.
Okay, that, that would be on our list.
So I wanted to know for Gavin's topic, can you state it exactly?
Gavin's topic, Gavin's topic would be commercial.
I liked the general overall plan of the town, and I was more like, sort of, just standing behind the existing zones, and then Dennis more was saying to possibly expand commercial A district, I think is what we were.
Okay, so it's districts themselves.
So you have discussion of the districts.
Yeah, yeah.
Applicability, should they be where they are, does it, does it make sense?
I'm kind of with you on this, I would not want to read district things, but we, one oh nine is business district, but we know already that, take the big Monarch.
Yeah.
We get complaints a lot about the traffic there.
Yeah.
And there were complaints.
All that in the airfield, same thing.
In the airfield, the same thing, we get a lot of complaints. Now, even if it's just not picking on any stores, again, just supposition, that a, a place like the General Store or Mooney's over in Chappworth decides to go in on one oh nine, that's a very mixed area, lots of houses, lots of everything, and the traffic is going to go like crazy, you know? Gee, if you live on this half of town and, you know, you've got to go and get a loaf of bread and a quart of milk, you don't want to go to Hannah Hertz or, you know, wherever. You've got a place within, you know, three or four miles of you that you can get it now. That's going to increase traffic a lot. So it's just something to make.
I want to make it clear that I'm not really for changing the zoning map.
No.
I'm just expanding the commercial.
Right, I think, I think we are in agreement with all of that.
So is the roads and the way they relate to the different districts, is that another topic, or is that a subtopic of Gavin's topic? How do you want to put it?
I think it's both.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would take them separately, but they are together, you know? Again. So how would roads? So how the roads service the different.
How the roads service the different districts is a good way of putting it, you know? And now we can get a lot more information about how the roads are and what they were. And I'm going to, with all of this, the other thing that's important to me is, you know, our population has changed. The, we've grown quite a lot, probably not as much, well, since 2000 to 2015, maybe about 500 residents. Those residents are all older. We have 22, back then, we had 2200, 2274 housing units of one type or another. There was absolutely nothing back then for senior living. Now we do have the Eagles Nest Stores.
Eagles Trace.
Eagles Trace.
Oh, that's fine.
Which is a 55 plus.
Yeah, it's a 55 plus.
Okay, so, you know, there are things like that that, that we can talk about and see. You know, and the other thing is our summer population goes up to 4,500 people. And that was in 2015, so four years later, with the building that's going on and the building affects us. And all those things we, we need to be aware of and look at. I think one of the biggest things is the, the age factor. We are aging now. That affects the schools.
Of the age population.
We can look at that, but really, you know, before someone thinks, well, that's really not the planning board's business. I think the whole thing is, it's a planning board, there are all factors in the planning board. We have to be very aware of it. So that's why, you know, going over, going over this.
Do you think it would be useful if, like when you're talking about the roads or the different topics, that would it be useful to maybe invite the road committee to sit in or go, go and get too.
Yeah, get too crazy.
So I would see like conservation.
No, we can ask for information.
I think when the time comes.
Yeah.
But.
Not now.
Not yet.
But I mean, just flipping through, and this was an update, again, from November 09, we wrote, we review.
What page is that?
I'm sorry, nine dash eight, Road and Road line.
We need to get rid of those.
Yeah, I would say we asked to get rid of the road and the roads, okay? I mean, it was very nice, but you know.
What's wrong with that?
We're not wrong.
I think it's not his favorite.
I'm not here when I did. I mean, on that pages, there's, first of all, to the implementation of a committee, timeframe 2005, now, we know it didn't happen.
Okay, what's that?
Nine, nine eight is about.
IXH.
One.
Go, go, right in the back of the book.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Everything is create a two acre residential zone as shown on future map views. And, and that's the committee, the implementation of a new comprehensive plan committee. But go down. Develop a subdivision standard for the village and transitional areas which encourages pedestrian and bike friendly travel ways. I know we get a lot of bikers through here, bicycle bikers through here.
Bicycle bikers.
No, 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 but I'm not sure where I want to ride a bike.
Well, if the shoulders are somehow.
You know, the shoulders are in such bad shape, I don't know where I'd be comfortable riding.
Even with, with the new paint part of all that, I wouldn't ride it out there.
No, no. And so for me, my part is, as a policy, this says discourage large subdivisions in the critical rural and rural parts of the town. That's, we, that just needs something to be talked about. And it comes under, we have some subdivision rules, we've got our regulations, but that whole, and that is, there's our responsibility, okay? And you keep going, and it's anything that it has planning board responsibility. And then the next, on nine dash 11, it doesn't say our responsibility, but it says ensure that new developments enacted, particularly in rural area, is keeping with the character and culture of the community. Then the strategies are all our responsibilities. I mean, just the sentence I read, to me needs, what character are we talking about?
Yeah, who gets to make that decision?
Who gets to make that decision? You know?
I know you don't want to, if you look at it, strategies one and two is create the community based on my experience.
Yeah, well, exactly. Exactly.
It's not working.
No, but I mean, that's, that's very. If you look at strategy number one, I think that's so pertinent. And number two, require buffers, okay? Now, we could just tie in what we want to talk about further down with buffers into this, and it would be, you know, maintain standards for, for home occupations, particularly those which have a natural resource based focus. What would that be?
A natural resource based focus?
What whole business would it be? Would that be?
Somebody who sold firewood or.
Marijuana.
Or.
Had a farm stand, farm stand.
Okay, a farm stand or there's.
They harvested wild edibles from their property or.
Something like, love that, really. But I mean, you just having milk and eggs?
Could be, yeah, could be.
And whoopie pies.
And or.
Rain.
Or, or.
Those groceries, you know?
We, we had, we had a fellow come in here just before one of our meetings about six or eight weeks ago, and he wants to put, he's thinking of farming and he's thinking of goat farming. And he would want to have a storefront where he would sell goat cheese, goat milk. He didn't say anything about any type of meats or anything, but he hasn't come back yet, but there's, was somebody, you know, it's kind of like the wedding venues that seem to be coming. You know, he's looking for a nice piece of land and we were one of the places he was checking out.
We've been venting a lot of farm to tables.
And farm to table is another thing. Where do we put farm to table in town? Table part is, is commercial, but farm is not commercial as it stands. It's not.
We wouldn't allow farming in a commercial district.
Wouldn't we?
It's a commercial entity and they're selling commercially, it's a commercial product.
We can look at it that way, but that's a.
Farming is.
Farming's not.
Someone could also argue the other way.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on the farm. I mean, if you look at Mountain Valley mushrooms, you go down in, off of Lancer Grove, that is a commercial farm. They sold the Cisco, market basket, Hanford's, Old Foods, all, all these, nobody says it's not a commercial farm.
Listen, no, it's, and I'm going to use the apple orchard for example, okay? When Nomak had their orchards and I Kelly had all his orchards.
Yeah.
They do commercial sales because they sell the Hanafed, they sell the Shop and Save, they sell the Shaws, they sell all over the place. But what I'm saying, they are not a commercial business. They are underneath the Department of Agriculture and you do not fall under any of the same regulations. Kenny will tell you the exact same thing.
Oh, no, I know that.
That they got their own set of rules.
And do?
You don't have to have a commercial license to drive a truck that weighs 80,000 pounds going down the road if that is an agricultural business.
Okay, but.
So I'm saying that there is.
Farm to table is also restaurants.
Not near in the commercial, right?
The restaurant's commercial.
The restaurant is, is commercial, but where, where is your farm going to be? You know?
You see, like, that's not allowed in critical rural.
It's not allowed in critical rural.
And on the others, it's a site plan review. I don't understand.
Exactly.
Why the critical rural is different than the rural?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, drive, drive, use attention to the map initially here, the dark, dark green is the critical rural and the lighter green is the regular rural. And there's also definitions in, a couple of definitions was one of the zoning ordinance that tells us the difference between the districts. And I think this is part of one of the comprehensive plan, but as far as I was, I'm concerned, I think, I mean, I can look right here in this thing too. It says critical rural, designed to preserve important natural features, right, need natural resources within the watershed boundaries and large undeveloped areas surrounding undeveloped great ponds for the critical rural, whereas the regular rural, this district is designed for larger residential lot sizes and limited growth in a manner which preserves the rural, rural character of the community. So, critical rural, if you look at the map, and like in the northern part of the town, that whole dark green area, that's where you have water going into three different rivers. You've got a four, you know, you've got.
Same.
So for in terms of water quality, and then you look at the part of the southern part of the town, a lot of that is what they call the self-acting swamps, which is on a lot of its IF and W wild, you know, bird waiting habitat and things like this. So they just, and I think they, and when they designed it, they picked areas that were furthest from the town center that were, that had these, what did they say, unique natural features.
Well, let me ask you this, and in the critical rural, where you wouldn't allow, allow farming, you're saying, Gavin?
Well, that's what you're saying the.
No, I'm asking, I'm not.
Well, no, we got to look at the board, right? Or you're asking me?
Yeah, like you said, in critical rural, you couldn't have the farms.
Um, well, I got to find, I didn't say I got to find.
What did I just read?
Oh, that sounds like the land you've charged me.
Yeah. I can't find it. Agricultural. Agricultural, commercial. And rural uses. Is permitted all across the town, it's additional uses, village, of course, it's not the shortland, of course.
No.
But that isn't what I was, I was looking at.
We have that one paper.
The shortage wasn't one feature.
I think so. But anyway, as you see, these things can become very.
Yeah, we need to look at it all.
We need to look at it all.
This is what?
For my thing, like, let's just go to page 12 in that same area. And again, this isn't exactly, it doesn't say it is our responsibility, but under housing, it's almost, what's written here, I believe, is almost impossible. Affordable housing, I mean, the whole thing, create, create additional housing opportunities through diversity of housing types. Well, we, we did the additional, the ADUs and, I mean, I don't know really, so that else could be out of there, but are we talking about doing? This is, the whole thing, some, this is just something for me is giving me a hard time when I read it. So that's something that I would say is something we should really look at. I don't think we want to look for, in the middle of the paragraph, to find, the town proposes to finalize a location to comply with the State Mobile Home Park Law, which might present a number of affordable housing opportunities. Do we really want trailer parks going forward? I don't even think our climate is good for things like that, frankly, but I mean, you know, it's for, you know, summertime things, that's a different thing, that's, that's business. So, you know, to me, that just needs a lot of talking about. And then we're going on and on, you know? The school, there are different things with the school.
But before you get off of this topic, as it says right here, this area, when they're talking about the location for affordable housing, the last, this area would be located in the transitional residential area and opens up about 400 acres of this potential affordable housing opportunity. So that orange area that's half a circle there, is the area identified in that.
It is.
Paragraph to be where people thought affordable housing should be located in
Yeah, and then it's, it also talks about plans to research the suitability of possible sites for affordable elderly housing on sites that may become available through tax foreclosures. That's pretty, you know?
They must have had something in mind.
I know, but it doesn't say what's in mind and that's what, you know? You know, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
We just have to look at tax foreclosures in the time period that the.
Right.
Five years after that is rain or something like this.
Exactly. But those are things we do have to do.
Right.
It's like Tom always says, this isn't an overnight process we're going to go through. And since we don't have a whole lot to do, I would like to not keep us here till, I was only kidding when I said 10 o'clock. But anything, but anything, anything that, do you have enough film, Richard?
Yes, yes. Or should I say no? No.
Forget it, you already blew it out of the water.
I've kind of lost control of my list.
You've got two or three things on it.
I've got three things.
Okay, well, that, that's fine.
Joyce, I'd like to, if you don't mind.
No, I don't want it all.
I don't disagree with this document. The problem is this, this information in here that is outdated.
Right.
You know what I mean? And the basic document is fine. All you could do is change the numbers and change the dates and whether it's the average person's salary that's in here or the business somebody drives or whatever, there's all that stuff. And the stuff about the school is really outdated. It says in here that we need to build some ball fields at the school and we need to maybe look at an addition and this and that. Well, we know we don't need an addition, we know the ball field's already built, we know they have a nice playground now. So there's a lot of stuff in here that's been addressed. And there's things in here, it's supposed to be addressed by 2006, 2007, and who's supposed to do it? And the problem is with the town, this isn't addressed at all. And this is, as far as I'm concerned, is the same thing as our zoning ordinance, whatever the, when the townspeople voted for this, it's something the town has to follow. So it's basically the town law.
Right.
And this almost always has been thrown in the bottom of the drawer and nobody looks at it. And it really needs to be addressed and it needs to be made a point that whether it's the planning board, whether it's a selectman, whether it's a school board. it's the planning board, whether it's a selectmen, whether it's a school board, whatever, they have to start going by this and, and, and making plans according to what we voted. And they're not doing it. At, at least three meetings about the roads, it's been assessed that this is an old outdated document, we can't use it. Well, until we change it, this is what we're gonna use.
This is the law.
You know what I mean? And there's a lot of responsibilities in here with the road committee, that's been a big issue. There's responsibilities in here that the road committee's supposed to be doing, the selectmen is supposed to be doing, the, the planning board's supposed to be doing, the school's supposed to be doing. And there's a thing in here about how much land we should be, the town should own, what should, what, what should we, what are we supposed to be doing with it? None of this stuff is being followed. So, my whole point about this is, either we're gonna follow this plan revised or not, or we're all wasting our time. And I don't see how, when you say in here that it's the selectmen and, and responsibility to do this, and they don't do it, you have to do it. You can't just say we're not doing it. I mean, what would happen if, if, if the planning board or the zoning board, we have this bump, and somebody comes in, oh, we're not doing that, we're gonna do it this way here instead. You can't do that. There's no government's run.
There's no consequences for them not doing it.
And there's these capital investment strategies. I mean, you look at this, two thousand five, thirty thousand dollars for expansion possibilities, transfer station in the roof, twenty thousand dollars.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Bridge rehab and replacement, two hundred thousand dollars, two thousand and six, and we've been arguing about the bridges for two years.
For two years, yeah.
There's been nothing. Open space account, um, we have spent money on, you know, what I consider open spaces, town, land the town owns. Study the town hall, that hasn't been done. Sols in the same shed, oh yeah, that was a good one, two thousand and eight, thirty thousand dollars, we spent over five hundred thousand dollars on that thing.
On that sol shed.
Is it really?
Yes, it was over five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it needs major repairs now.
Squad car for the fire, twenty thousand dollars. We just spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, this central engine system, all right, I know they're wrong on that.
How about the bridge, bridge rehab and replacement, which is, which was backed down in two thousand nine?
Right. Fire engine, two hundred thousand dollars, and that's two thousand twelve. I'll tell you right now, that was only like four hundred and fifty. That was the old one, not the newer one.
Right.
It, there's all these things that aren't getting addressed, and all I'm saying is, I don't know what the answer is, I know when I read this, I said, what the heck? And I agree with the basic document, but nobody is following it.
It's going, it's going to take a catastrophic event to have that.
Right, for this, I, I think, you know, getting out, even though we've got a list of three things tonight that we all know, I think we're all in agreement. The document itself is fine.
Yeah, it's fine, it's right.
There's not a thing wrong with the document, but nothing is being done the way it should be done. And I think before we can really start rattling cages, blowing horns, we should look at things that are directed to us as our responsibility. And that, if, if it's our responsibility under, you know, whatever it is over here, you know, I'm just out of the blue. Develop language to, for determining off-site improvements to be paid for by developments for insertion of subdivisions. Okay, let's make sure we've got that done. And that may relate back to something in another part of the book that we've got to make sure that that is in tune with, because I just, this is a legal document, so we can't say A on our section, we're over here at C. We need to make sure that A is A and B is B and, you know, all the way through. So, I think, keeping in mind what we feel is important, is what we do, but we, we start with things that are direct, directed as our responsibilities.
What, anything that's in there that's directed at the planning board?
Yeah.
Both of them wants to be addressed first.
That's what we address first.
So, who is the overall key influencer of the document?
I imagine...
It should be the upstairs.
It should be the BOS and the administrator?
I mean, because, because they're all under their auspices up there.
Right.
You know what I mean? The three selectmen and the schools you have.
Right.
I mean, down the road, obviously, we're gonna see, we, the schools have a long-term plan for, forever. It might not address all the issues in here that you're talking about with the school, but they might have some issues in here that...
Exactly.
You know, that might need to be added to it. So, obviously, we'd wanna meet with the school department, whether it be the superintendent and the facilities director, both, or the school board, and we get to the school stuff.
Yeah, well, and see, there's just one more I picked out at random. Work to preserve rare and endangered plants, animal habitats, and other important natural resources within and over, within, within Acton and adjacent communities. Responsibility, planning board. Consider requiring joint review or notification of abutting municipalities when a project impacts habitats that cross town boundaries.
Just went through that.
Yeah, just went through it.
Well, a lot of things are in there because people saw they were gonna come up, which we didn't really address them.
The follow-through hasn't taken place.
No, no.
But that's why I, we're saying, it's a good document, but the follow-through has to happen.
I think this is probably the most, one of the most important documents the town's got.
And in a lot of, I wish I could remember all, and which one, but in a lot of planning board and ordinances, you have to be, you know, you have to be on board with your comp plan.
That's in our checklist.
Exactly.
Well, it's almost like we need a comprehensive planning committee that, that is made up of members of the planning board, members of the warrant finance committee, members of the school.
Well, that's why I'm saying, let's do, let's do our...
You know what I mean? And then they'll go around at the different groups, say, how are we doing on X, Y, and Z years? To go to the BOS and say, what have you been doing on X, Y, and Z?
Yeah.
Well, it's fine with me.
But I, but who's gonna be on that committee and how we're gonna, you know?
Well, I don't really think it's for us to, we can suggest anything to the BOS, but I think we need to start working on our direct responsibilities first.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
You know, if, if we're not ready to walk the walk, talking the top stuff isn't gonna do us any good. So, I think, and I had talked to Ken about this, and, and what, he feels very good about the updates to our zoning ordinances, and he feels that we can, as we go along, we'll just keep, if we see something that needs changing, we're just gonna list it and we'll, you know, but that's gonna be a little aside thing now, because we got the biggest part of it done. But what he'd like to do is have us meet the second and fourth Wednesday as workshop to do this, not every week, but the second and fourth Wednesday in the afternoon to work on our direct responsibilities in the comp plan. And we can always talk about it, Ken. You know, like, I, I think I can safely say, like, we wouldn't do it on the twenty first of this month, because I think we're gonna be full up on our agenda, but any night that we have, you know, it's eight thirty, we say, okay, we can, we can spend another, you know, half hours.
I think that works as well, too, is that when, when the subcommittee meets, if a little report came out of that, that we could distribute to all members, so that even if it doesn't come up at the next meeting, you're reading it and considering it and digesting it.
Yes.
So, when you do have a minute to bring it up, if you know it...
That would be good.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
But we're not gonna forget either.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you lose things, things goes on.
Right.
I think it's important to realize that, at least since I've been on the committee, I mean, the planning board is going through their bylaws and redone, they've gone through the zoning ordinance and addressed things that Kenny had issues with, that hopefully got them addressed. And with Gavin, looking through the subdivision stuff, there was a few corrections in there, stuff that didn't need to be addressed, and that's all been done in the last two or three months.
Right.
And so, I...
We have been...
I'm not too my mom, but I am everybody else, and I think, I think the committee's really done a good job going through this stuff, they're trying to keep it updated to make things better. And the next thing is, our responsibilities on the comprehensive plan.
Right. The, you know, and, and again, and I know, Yoli, that, you know, you, you work on Wednesdays and all that, but if there's ever a day where you can't get to your office because of snow or something, walk across the street on a Wednesday. And, you know, there may be a time when we wanna change it to a Saturday morning, you know, when more of us could make it, but that's almost possible, because the office is open two Saturdays a month. And so, if we had questions or clarifications from, from Ken or Brenda, they're here, you know, we could do that as well. Because Ken does give us a block of time on, on, on Wednesdays, so we are on his schedule and stuff.
Are we going now to, not every week, but every other, or second, fourth now?
The second and fourth.
Okay. It works well, because if you do have something that needs, you know, compiling and distributing, that gives us like a whole week to do.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, you know, so we can, we can consider doing that, I would throw it out to Ken first, because in the summer, we might be using those Saturday mornings for sidewalks and things like that, until daylight savings time runs around.
That's, that's beginning March.
Oh, that's right, it is.
It is, really?
I feel like it's been dark for so long.
The only other thing I'd like to say, Joyce, is, and this is about the other committee members, and I wish everybody was here, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I've been on a lot of committees in town in the last forty-five years, and the way we discuss things and go through things and accomplish things, I need to say, this is the most enjoyable committee I've ever been on with the people that's on this committee, and I really enjoy it.
Thank you.
And Ken did want everyone to know that the fee schedule was approved without the research, but he wanted, we worked on it?
Right.
Yeah, he wanted to know what the status was.
Yeah, and the research, they were still gonna talk about. Upstairs was still gonna talk about it. So, we don't know if that'll ever change. I think there's still a misunderstanding of what the research, that's, you're absolutely correct, with what I heard.
And, and they didn't increase the percentage on the permanence, they left that at the same.
Right.
No, they left that at the four percent.
Oh, 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 yeah, but I think...
We had, we had recommended, we increased that.
We had recommended, but...
Oh, the four dollars per thousand?
No, one percent, uh, no.
You had the four, right?
The four, one of the first.
Wasn't the change at the six, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Ken felt that by keeping that, where a property owner is coming in and just maybe doing a little addition, they're not paying a ton, but a contract, he, he tried to put the increase of the fees over onto the contractor's side of the ledger as much as possible.
Right.
I'm fine with it, you know, again, just wanted to hear what Ken thought.
Right, if you...
He's, he's one of the...
Like, as I say, if you don't ask, you don't get. So, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Call in favor? Guys, have we been here longer?
Couldn't we?
Thank you, everyone. And if you can give me a message...